I mean, I usually just start a couple of minutes.
There.
He's probably out on that mirror. I get that clock set. Every meeting I look at it and say, I get that filed in, it's like three minutes off. Forget about it.
Oh, the clock is running.
Well, you never look that direction. I sit here and look at it all the time, so I know.
I just look to see what time the meeting starts. Well, so we start on time. Not yet. You have midterm, huh?
Might as well.
All sides. I'm just giving you a little heads up, both sides.
Joe, we don't want to go there.
It's just a little tiny spot.
Well, I think it's close enough to the power of July fourteenth, twenty fifteen, council meeting in order, all council members present. So some comments. Wish to address the council on anything not on the agenda. Do we have any corrections or additions to the agenda? In case we ever want to accept the agenda as granted. Second act. On favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda. We have a motion to accept that, or is there something that needs to be removed?
How do you consent to the consent agenda? I'll send that.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, and our presentations and public hearings is legislative update by Senator Matt Schmidt, which apparently is going to be after our meeting. So we can move on to engineering. Update on feasibility work for street reconstruction project.
Thank you, Mayor. Not a lot to update in terms of actual tangible results. We've just been kind of poking away at feasibility type work for the past couple of months. But I talked with Mark and thought probably was appropriate for us to put together a schedule of target dates, so we have targets for when we're going to get the milestones in the project completed. And I sent that to Mark, the Administrator of Balsam, today, and that's been at places at council, basically tonight. So we based off the two thousand sixteen construction and assessment hearing being held at the end of construction, laying out the chapter four twenty-nine project. If we target having feasibility report done by this fall, we could call for the public hearing improvement, excuse me, call for that first public hearing for the improvements in September, hold the public hearing in October. Assuming that goes well, we could approve the report and order the project at that time, get the plans completed by January. At the January meeting authorize advertising for bids, get the notes out in the papers for the contractors, take bids in February, and then depending on the timing of the meetings, likely award the contract in March, hold the pre-construction meeting and be ready to go as soon as frost comes out of the ground, typically around May fifteenth. So, we don't have any, a lot of tangible things that have happened in the last month on the project, but these are kind of the targets.
Still, contact homeowners, correct?
Correct, yep. Still working on the sewer televising and the services. But just wanted to give you some level of comfort that with the project schedules laid out, there's still plenty of room in here for us to hit that date and be ready to go with the bids this winter to get a good bid prices and then to be ready to go first thing in the spring.
Right, so how many of the homes haven't been contacted and scheduled yet?
You know, I tried to contact my technician that's coordinating that today, but he was out for a funeral yesterday and today, so I haven't been able to get ahold of him to get an accurate count. I know that, I think it was roughly between forty to fifty homes total that we had to do. I don't know as far as how many have been done and how many are still remaining.
Are they kind of keeping you up to date as to how they're progressing, or are you calling them?
They're working with my technician, and he's.
By working with him, what do you mean?
Well, he's coordinating with the televising company.
So he would know the percentage has doubled, and so far what the results look like?
Correct.
So what happens if it turns out it's not feasible? Because that's what the survey is for right now.
Correct, that's what the report will do. The report is going to determine essentially three major questions. What needs to be done, how much it's going to cost, and how it's going to be paid for. And if those three factors are all in alignment, and council, the council can, will consider the report regardless. If you determine it's not a feasible project, you could simply say, we don't want to report with the project at this time, or we need to look at other options, and that stops the process. But if the feasible report comes back with a feasible project that the scope seems right, the cost seems reasonable, and you have the funding mechanism to pay for it, then you can choose to actually order the project. At that point, we'll put together the detailed construction documents to offer the bids.
Okay, and what determines each home as far as feasibility goes? I mean, if it's quarter of a mile to get the plumbing to this guy's house, and he's hoping that we're going to pay for it, does that pretty much say, well, you want to come up with the money yourself?
Well, the homes that we're looking at are the homes on the, trying to evaluate their sewer services, because some of those private sewer mains are private. I just wanted to ascertain what kind of condition they're in, what upgrades, if any, would be needed to bring with the city standards, so that the city could take them over as public mains as part of this project. So we would do any upgrades to those sewer mains, take them over as public, do the street construction, and then the corridor will be set with, reconstruct the street, and the sewer mains there would then be public mains.
Okay, but I know in the past there have been private sewers that don't necessarily come out on the road. You would think that they come out.
And that's, that's why, yes, right, and that's why we're looking is because we want to see, we want to know that if we're going to rebuild First Street, what sewers are under that street, what sewers are crossing that street.
And where it'll come out.
Yeah, because if there's a home that the service goes to back up the alley, we don't necessarily need to address that sewer right now because it's our street work.
Depending on the condition of it.
Correct, right.
So all of a sudden, we're here at the, almost the middle of July, and we got just another month, and we really don't, we don't really know much yet. We've been kind of asking stuff, and we just kind of, oh, you gotta wait for this report, this report. We don't have anything, so let's see what's going on.
That's what I asked, Pat. I think we should have by now, I really honestly think we should have more results.
We're spending, we're spending big bucks and not learning anything.
Probably the biggest difficulty right now is scheduling with the homeowners to get into their basement to. Has TV camera.
It's the middle of July and things.
And is it the homeowners that refuse to let people in, or, or the feasibility people who, well, we can do it at one thirty today, and if you can't do it then, then it's going to be next week or the following week.
I haven't heard of any homeowners that'd be.
Joe, what I would be, Joe, what I would like, and I'm not trying to be mean about this, but we're taking your word, which I fully understand, but I would like something on paper that shows us, boom, boom, we're this far along in a schedule, a draft or something. What has been completed already, what is in the process of being completed, and what's left to be completed. So we've got something else besides your word on it. That's all I'm saying. And I want some dates, some times, all of these sort of things where you're at.
Well, we can certainly do that. The other thing that the Administrator talked about today is, you know, targeting a completion of the feasibility report so we can move forward with the project. I don't recall that the council has actually authorized preparation of the report. They authorized the preliminary investigative activities, but the Administrator and I were discussing whether or not the report actually got authorized.
Well, see, part of this is, some of this, or a lot of that work that they're doing now is going to actually go into that feasibility study. So what they did, like with the televising, and I guess it probably has taken a few months longer than I was hoping it would, but when it was done up on Third Street, really, everything was kind of done with, you know, fast track, and it was done, okay, we're going to do all this in a short period of time with the feasibility study. And what we tried to do this year, since we weren't going to do the project until next year, was basically, I mean, it got to that point that there's just a lot more feasibility work and a lot more of these private mines there that have to be looked at, that basically it would take, we would take and try to do a more thorough job ahead of time, and then this is all going to be part of the feasibility study. So, and Joe, you corrected my wrong, but when you authorize the feasibility study, that will answer, I think, a lot of these questions as far as which houses are going to be included. It's not going to have all of this facts, per se, but it would say, okay, we anticipate Fulton and, Joe, anticipate that, you know, these ten houses will connect to the main at, you know, this direction, and there will be five going off of another direction. And I'm kind of talking just in general terms here.
Joe, I'd ask you, if you could, I mean, get back to the office and get in touch with this tech that's been coordinating with the place road router that's doing the televising, find out where they are, how many places are done, how many are left to do, and just shoot us an email update of where you are, and that would, that would make us all feel better to know. Since that seems to be the main thing that's holding it up at this point.
No, and that's why I wanted to give you the schedule, to show that we're really, we're not behind schedule, because Mark is right in the fact that there aren't individual deliverables that are coming to you after each piece of investigation that we do. There's the feasibility report that will identify the existing conditions, which would be the condition of the curb, the condition of the streets, the condition of the utilities, including the sewer. Identify all those existing conditions, what the issues are, what the proposed improvements are, what the cost of those improvements are, what the financing efforts are for that. So that really is the deliverable that's going to package all of that information together.
I agree. I'm frustrated myself.
Yeah, we can certainly give you progress.
Where are we on this? Well.
And we can certainly give you progress, progress report, right?
That's what I would like, and we're looking, like what you printed out here, to a September first public meeting. And that, well, we need to know, and we need to get together so that we can present it to the individuals.
Well, it's September.
There's going to be some surprises that we're not going to be able to answer.
Correct.
And that, this looks like a pretty heavy schedule to me.
Well, the public hearing would actually be in October. You need, you need that, my council actually, yeah, you got to call it so that it can be advertised with the, with the duly.
But we're looking at two months, basically, and this is late, one week later. So I don't know where those two are going to fall in. If we're going to have them at the council meetings, we're shortchanging ourselves, I think, by basically two weeks.
Well, I anticipate there will be a special meeting before, we're not going to go in, you're not going to go into this hearing not knowing what's going to go on.
Okay.
I'm not going to go in not knowing what's going on, and that means you're not going to go in. So we're going to have to have, one, I don't know about two, but we're going to have to have at least one special meeting where we say, okay, here's where we're laying this out, this is what we're looking at, so that you'll know, you know, where you're at. So, and that, this doesn't reflect that, per se, because this reflects, I guess you could say, the milestones of a project. You know, there may be several public or special meetings within this, but we don't know until we get into it. We do know there will be one at the beginning, and I'm assuming there will be one at the end before that assessment hearing. But this schedule doesn't reflect that, because you can't really put those in at this point, you know, it's fluid. As far as, okay, from one meeting, from one month to another, how much does the council need to know? And I know it depends on the person, but there will be meetings before we get too far into this. When Joe gets a lot of this pulled together, we'll have a meeting, we're going to lay everything out.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, that's a given. Maybe we should have put something on here about that, but this is the actual, I guess, for lack of a better word, the legal milestones for a street project.
That's good discussion.
Oh, no, it is.
Something that should have been brought up already, it's just kind of simmering a little bit, and we've got it straightened out. He's going to, you know, bring in a little more information to us, and might as well email it. I think would be great. We ought to be happy.
Internally, we've been working, knowing that we're targeting this feasibility report, and knowing, you know, that the target is for construction, you know, bids this winter in construction when it's finished by next year. But we could have communicated the schedule to you that evening previously, so that you knew too, that the amount of time that we have in this schedule for these milestones.
I appreciate that. Thank you. So this year, it's not feasible?
Correct.
This year, no?
Well, this season, yeah. We basically.
What, did we have it done by November, December?
What, the project?
Yeah.
No.
So it's not feasible to even get started?
No. Well, we do, right, and see, because it's an assessment project.
Right, yeah. We can get some things done, but you're, obviously, unfortunately, the last thing that you've got to do in the project is essentially your concrete curving, then your battlements paid, and most of the things are the most temperature dependent. When you start to get into there, you know, later in the fall, you've got those freezing nights, that's when you've got to start doing special construction procedures for your concrete, which increases the price. And you do that final lift of asphalt, when the temperatures are cold, and you won't get the good quality results. So, yeah, at this point, the proof of us have actually been targeted, twenty sixteen construction.
Absolutely. Yeah, because this is a four twenty-nine assessment project, we have to go through more hoops than you do for a normal street project. You have to, you know, officially, you have to officially call for a feasibility report, you have to officially approve a feasibility report. You know, you have to go through other steps like that that with a normal street project, you don't go through, which means that these things normally start in a fall, and then they start construction the next season, because it just takes these assessment projects take longer because of the laws that we have to follow, federal and state laws according to, you know. And you guys have been here, have been through this, you know. Doug, you'll see when you go through this, that there will be like, things that have to be approved by the council almost every month.
I agree with what you're saying, and that, I understand that. But there's also, it seems like we're spinning our wheels in a, in a sense, in some things. That's why I asked for, oh, to the report, and I think that's only right that we should have that.
Yeah, we're going to have that before this goes too far, we're going to have to. That's how you're going to make your decision, whether you want to move ahead or not.
Okay, we move on to the update on the fire facility project.
Yes. I've been in contact with both the architect and with our staff person that's doing the phase one environmental analysis. Both of those are scheduled to be completed by the end of next week. Space needs analysis might get done by the end of this week, but I'm guessing that that's pretty optimistic. But I think we can comfortably say or reasonably say that both the space needs analysis with the two site plans and two block diagrams, along with the phase one environmental investigation will be wrapped up by, I mean, July twenty-fourth. I think at that time, Administrator and I were talking that we're probably looking at, trying to schedule that second committee meeting to review the completed block diagrams and determine which option is preferable.
Either July, the last week of July, or the first week of August. I said the word July, just remembering earlier this afternoon.
And Joe, I might tell you too, I think you're doing a good job on this fire, in the fire department building, and that, you brought us up to date, and this is what I'd like, is to seal it open, and that's why I asked for the, the street department, or you know, the.
Oh, I understood.
For street, and that to get it done. And that's what I'd like, and that's what we were losing on, and otherwise I'd give you credit for what you're doing.
All right, appreciate it.
And the phase one environmental, of course, is that.
Oh, that'll be completed by July twenty-fourth as well. Waiting for some information on some of the title research she has to do to see if there have ever been any indications of environmental records on the property. So just waiting for some of the official clearances on those investigations. So I spoke with her this morning, and she was comfortable that she would have it done by the end of next week.
And so far, there's no red flag, so.
Not that I've heard.
I don't expect there to be.
No, and she's done her site visit, and I believe she's interviewed the current owner as well, and the history of the project, of the, excuse me, property, if they're aware of. So I believe the bulk of the work is done, she's just waiting for some of these who sends the information that she had, send away for, and wait for it to, for those responses to come back in to give her the all credit. And that, there will be a report that is, a report that's prepared to summarize the findings. So I would expect that that report will be delivered to the city by the end of November.
And survey for the lots split.
Okay, wraps finishing up, Mark?
Yeah, he's got the corners staked out, if anybody wants to go out there and look. You can see three of them. The fourth one is kind of somewhere in the woods where the trestle is. And anyway, but he's got that done, and so I think he's probably now working on the legal, and then the legal description.
As soon as we have that, we will do the fire subdivision, create two separate lots, and then we can move to closing at that point. That's the last piece we need for that.
So if you go out there and you want to look, there's stakes that are about four feet high, I would say, and they've got, you know, red kind of plastic on the top of them, but you can kind of see behind that older building there on the right side of Centennial, and then you follow that down, and you can kind of see where they go. And one thing I'll tell you, that road right away goes way a lot further over to the north than I pictured it. But then you can see some manholes, so then you can kind of get that perspective. But that's why those stakes are over as far as they are. But I mean, it's, he's got it staked out for acres, so it's right where, you know, where he wanted to be. And I think the configuration is, is good for them. There's forty feet behind that building, it goes all the way to the north on the other side of where that trestle is. So I mean, it's pretty much what we, what we've talked about. I mean, you've always got, you know, little nuances just based on the way the road right away is and the other property, but.
The owners of space between the north line and that building on North Saturday.
Okay, well, he's got the one stake there, and I'm looking, I don't know if I'm talking about the same area, but yep, Petrichka.
Yep.
And then you have Earl behind him.
So, is, does the property we are purchasing go all the way to Petrichka, or is there a space?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, as far as I know of this.
You're referring to Earl, is that a question right now?
Okay, so.
That's the one.
Well, he's, yeah, he's going to put a bigger stake or do something different.
So there's not, there's not a strip of old man's land between the property owners?
No.
Where's the round bed settled in that? That has always been a dispute.
According to, according to the documents I had seen, I believe it was on the property that the city was purchasing.
Yes.
Yeah, the trestle, almost all of it is, is on the Full Craft property.
Yeah, okay.
And so the idea is we're going to tear all that up, take all that out of there.
Do you think there'll be any problem with the owners in the area thinking that they're infringing on their property?
There shouldn't be, because this, this was registered back in two thousand four, and that was the whole point of it, to establish the boundary line. So Full Craft did that in two thousand four, and they replied that they actually registered the property, so it should be pretty clear. That's one of the reasons on the phase one, there aren't abstracts around. They were turned into court, so all the abstracts were created at that point in time, basically go away because it's not an industrial property. So they were all provided notice at that point in time. So we should have, we should have a good boundary. In fact, we were working off of a good boundary survey from two thousand four, so that's where this all started.
All right, I can bring this up here real quick.
While you're doing that, I should mention, the other thing that we still want to do is part of the diligence on the lot is the geotechnical investigation. And we had talked with the architect about that, because obviously there's information he wants to get, that he's going to need for the time in that building. And he wanted, he asked if we could wait on ordering the geotechnical work until he had the site plans done, so that he could make sure he was identifying his investigation.
Or in the correct place.
So, correct. So, assuming that he gets those site plans done by the end of next week, at that point, we should be able to put together that scope work, the geotechnical work, and then get some quotes to get that, geotechnical work done on the site as well.
So I brought up on the JS, this is, this is the whole Full Craft site, and obviously it doesn't reflect our survey yet.
And you brought up the twenty fourteen area?
Yes, I can.
With, probably.
Thanks for, Mike, I appreciate that. Anyway, you can see the property line here. This is Petrichka's, where the arrow is, and then you can see that black line, it might be a little hard to see, but the trestle, for the most part, is on the Full Craft property. And you can see really how much that really takes up, so if that's leveled out of there, it's going to give us a lot of room back there. And then this is Earl's property right here.
Yeah, that would be historic.
So our line is going to be forty feet behind this building here, so it's going to be kind of right here where the arrow is, and then if you take that, and again, this is, you know, obviously kind of rough, but you can kind of see. So this corner is going to be awfully close to where Earl and Petrichka's line is there. And I can't say till I see it whether it'll be on which side it's on, actually, but it is right in that general area. But you can see where the line is. There's no depth, there's no area between these lots and Full Craft. I mean, it's a straight property line, so. That gives you, kind of gives you an idea of what, what it looks like. And we're going to go forty feet behind this building right here, from, would be on the west side. But this road, and you can kind of see this line here, but if you walk out here, it, it looks like it's further out. But there's a manhole up here, at least one manhole, that it's in quite a ways. I don't know why it was configured that way, but there's a fair amount of grass within that right away there, and this is a city street. But it's out on the other side too, there's quite a bit of right away there. So I think there must be some utilities that kind of jump through there or something.
Okay, so we can move on into item eight, legal, lot combination request of Christopher Anderson, five oh six Redman Avenue.
So you sent the motion to approve this?
Same lot, item, just three pieces of property belonging to the same person. And actually, some of that was railroad property at one time. Motion to.
So. Second act.
On favor?
Aye.
Fire hall purchase resolution twenty fifteen dash ten, declaring the official intent for the city of Kenyon to reimburse certain expenditures from proceeds of bonds issued by the city. And Doug, this would go back to what we talked about earlier today, that the money that can be expended on this project now.
Yeah, it's a formality to allow the city to recruit some of those. Yeah, it's a formality to allow the city to recoup some of those expenditures due to non-proceeds and use those at that point in time to reimburse for their being paid out now. The only thing that's missing is area number two is just a rough estimate of what we believe is the estimated maximum amount. That's where the cost of the side of the mark, you had a number to plug in there, not truly to put that in there, but. And again, it is a estimated maximum, so we estimate.
So we don't estimate, all right, so I think what we should probably plug in there is, I think, two million?
Yeah.
It's not gonna be that much, but you say you always want this to be high.
Yeah.
Because if you run into, run into pay costs, things like that, then we should be more than covered.
There would be a motion to approve Resolution 2015-10. Go move.
I'll second that one.
On favor?
Aye.
And on to old business. Kenyon Snowdrifters Club donations in the municipal store slash patio. I gotta say, I don't really understand why this is back on the agenda. We approved accepting the donation at our last month's meeting. The club actually cannot specify what the money has to be expended on. Uh, we would, we approved, we approved accepting the donation. The patio, whether that will be constructed or not is a separate issue. Beyond the legalities, I don't think it's proper for a private club like this to try to demand that the city spend money on a business type activity that may or may not, and in my opinion, likely wouldn't ever generate enough additional business to pay for itself. If it were a park improvement, something that would be available to every citizen of the city. That would be a different story when it's enterprise fund that is not amenity for open, of everyone in the public. But enterprise fund is supposed to be making a profit to defray the amount of real estate taxes that have to be assessed. I don't personally feel it's appropriate at all. It would be of use only to a very small percentage of the citizens. And as I said, the donation, accepting the donation has already been approved last month. I don't see any reason why we need to even vote on it again.
Mike, when you say it's only used by a few citizens, that those people that patronize there help defray expenses, over expenses of a swimming pool, a park, a library, which doesn't create enough revenue.
This is true.
The liquor store has always, since we've been on over the years, has, has put a lot of money back into defraying the costs of the swimming pool, parks, and library.
That's true. I don't necessarily agree with that's true.
I, I think in the past, the liquor store has cost the city money. So if anything, it's prevented the city from making necessary pool improvements, apartment improvements. We did have to have some meetings to see if we wanted to continue because it was not picking money. Uh, last year, it didn't make enough money to give the city any money.
Changes.
Uh, it only made enough money to pay some of the money due to KMU. So the liquor store is just barely making a profit. Anytime you've got a business making only two or three percent profit on the money that they're bringing in. That's not a very well-run business. And so I, I agree with Mike that the study has not been done to show how this patio is going to increase the profits and whether it will increase the profits. There needs to be a lot more study done to justify putting a patio up there.
Scott? Now, we did approve accepting the donation at our last month's meeting. Is there any reason whatsoever that we would need to vote on that again? There's still would be the same restriction.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, depends on what the donor wants to do. Just by accepting doesn't mean they have to provide it. And if they want to say, we want you to use it for this and that's what we want considered. Certainly, that may be the new vote, if that's the request. But ultimately, it's up to the council to decide what you're constructing or not. I mean, that's what it comes down to. Either you decide you're doing that and then you accept, or you don't. I, I mean, I think that's what it comes down to. And I don't know if they're willing to provide donation absent it being used for this purpose. That's, again, the donor has the ability to say that as well. You know, it's kind of fifty-fifty on what you do here. Because the reality is, you can say they can't dictate, but in the end, they don't have to provide either.
No.
I mean, that's, it's their decision as well. So, yeah, I, I, if the council's determination is no not to proceed with some type of project, I doubt they'll provide that. If it is, and that's the project, these folks sound like they want to provide the revenue for it.
Now, they, they want to pay a portion of what it would cost. City would have to come up with, so what do we, what was it another?
It would be providing less than half of them.
All together with fence and everything. With what?
Fence.
Fence.
Yeah.
Fence, the paving.
Paving.
I don't have any problem with them donating money to the city. I've got a problem with them telling us that you have to spend this money on this, which the donor would be totally useless without the patio. It doesn't, actually. Except that maybe it's possible we can win the problem. Now, that's a different situation. Frankly, in my opinion, if, my feeling is, if they don't want to provide the funds absent the, we, us committing at this point to building this patio. Maybe they should take that money and put it somewhere else. I was told after the last, the day after the last meeting, that this had happened. Sadly, I relied on the one source who told me that the money was going to the fire department instead. And I passed that information on to others, which turns out to be incorrect. So that was my bad there. I should have confirmed that before I went any further. That would have been, in my mind, a much more appropriate place for donation to go. As they should not be able to tell us what we have spent money on. We can't tell them what they have to spend that money on. Only the state statutes and administrative rules on charitable donations govern that.
I agree. Mike, I've got a question for you. I don't even know if it's possible or not. How would you feel about, let's say that it creates something like the Friends of the Muni or something. They put together a three-year project. I'm just using this here, pie in the sky thing. How would you accept it then, that they go ahead? I believe, if I'm correct, they have already supplied TVs to the business.
Yeah.
Am I correct on that? I don't know. That's what I've heard.
That's from the.
Going something with that, I, I kind of feel this way. Looking at it too, I don't want to be strong-armed into telling me that I'm gonna, you're gonna either spend this money on this or not at all. We're not giving you, I don't like that idea. But if we could work something with them to create something, I honestly feel that it would be a benefit in the long term.
And what are you basing that on?
Uh, when you say a two and three percent return on profit. If you go into a grocery store, they're mighty happy if they make one percent profit.
I, I've seen most businesses would like to come up with a ten percent profit or more.
Oh, yeah, I imagine anybody would. I would like to too, have a ten percent increase. But when you look at it, let's just go right here.
One percent profit on your business is pretty skinny.
It is, but that's grocery, if I'm correct. And overall groceries are about a one percent in most cases. This is an immense operating cost on it. Depends on how you could buy all of that. I feel that if the muni is capable of handling it and paying for it somehow, I don't know. And if we can work with these people, in the long run, we're getting something out of a better quality building to the area. I think it'll look good. I think it can have a green area. I think it can be compromised and worked together. And maybe if we could create something with these individuals, then literally it would be paid by them, by the Snowmobile. Or the other ones that donate. That's why I said.
The donation is less than half the cost.
It is, had you. But what happens?
And in the past, the muni has not really paid for itself. It has been borrowing money to make improvements. And yet, like I said, last year, they didn't even pay anything but on the principal.
They paid it, yeah. Well, they started pulling, they're saying about water though.
Oh, yeah. Year after year, they stay right at, at water level. And in which case, then you can come up with another quarter of a million dollars to put in there, which is what we paid in the last eight years for the muni.
First, Mike, if you want to speak to me, tell me my own personal experience. I think there were some medical stakes made on that end of it.
And that's what I'm saying. There is no, we have not done any great amount of planning on this patio. It's, well, let's have a patio and the fence is gonna cost this much. And paving may cost this much and, well, that's part of it, but that's not the whole deal.
Would you accept? I'm, I'm not a Snowmobile, I'm not anything. I'm sitting in the middle riding a bike. And that's exactly what it did. But I'm also looking at it, trying to compromise. And I honestly feel in my own self that I think it would be an asset. Honestly, it would. Now, I'm asking you this, would you be on the spot? Let's say the Snowmobile club or whoever wishes to donate towards it and puts it together as a program that literally is gonna be pretty much their finances to get it done. Would you be interested in going forward?
It depends on how they present it.
Before or so.
Yes.
Well, since you were asking me also, is there absolutely no circumstances that I would approve of this, or are there some? And yes, you don't have to lay out a bunch of city money for something. Frankly, I still don't believe it's gonna pay for itself, but.
Right.
If, if it doesn't have to pay for itself, that's a different story. If it, because it's set up here twenty by thirty, that's only a portion of the property over here. So there would still be some of it available to be used as it is now. That would be a little bit different story.
Like with any business, you just can't stay stable. You have to go with the times. And times change. At the last remodeling, it, it really improved the image and improved the sales.
Or it didn't improve the sales.
It had to improve the profitability. I haven't actually seen.
Well, if you look historically, Milkie will be probably admit.
The profitability has gone down.
Milkie will probably admit that he's learning, every year, he's getting more and more. He's got some fantastic figures now. And I, patios are, are the thing. And right now, patios are a very popular item. And I think, like any business, you have to invest in the business, especially when we're representing the taxpayers. And all of a sudden, somebody wants to donate some money to help our business. It's our responsibility to say, okay, let's look at this.
Looking at it, I, I have no issue with looking at it.
And, and that's what I'm saying also, that.
And you can't put.
Allegiance is not.
You can't put personal issues, you're, you're on, you're on here as representing the taxpayers.
Yes, and I, I think, I mean, this liquor store is more like a private club because there is only a small percentage of the people in Kenyon who go to liquor store.
Exactly.
Whereas all our other enterprise funds serve everybody.
And the profits from the liquor store.
If there are profits.
Help pay for these other funds.
No, the other funds are all self-supporting and they need that ten percent that we were talking about.
Well, I think you, I mean, Richard.
Yes.
I think he was talking, when he said funds, not other enterprise funds, but other city funds. The general fund and the pool and the center.
The patio isn't about making money. It's not about making extra money or extra revenue for the city.
What's the reason for it?
It's, it's to, it's to accommodate the people that are paying money to the city to, to be there already. Now, the Snowdrifters, they have portages.
Yeah, yes. So we have a listed interest.
People go there and invest their money.
Yes.
Now, they're getting, they're getting a big chunk of their money back as profit, the Snowdrifters.
Yes.
They want to donate to something. They've already donated TVs over the years. They've donated.
They're required by law to donate.
Right.
Right.
But why not?
It's questionable whether that's appropriate charitable donation.
Yeah, since I've been on the council, this patio's come up over and over and over.
And I, I think, I think when you talk about, you know, the people that are doing the gambling, it's nice for them to see where their money is.
More than just so.
Another thing that's actually occurred to me thinking about this patio is what kind of a security problem would it be you have? When customers are inside the building, the bartenders aren't able to observe them and know what's going on. When they go out onto the patio, closes the door, you can't really see what's going on. Is there a fight starting?
It's no different than the back door. People standing at Schweitz, Schweitz as an enclosed area.
It is different.
And they have people going out there to serve. Okay, so does the muni then do the same thing? In which case, we have to hire another person to service that patio area. Schweitz has an all-around patio.
We only have a.
Schweitz has a four or five.
Different apples.
Totally different, yes. Schweitz has been brought up as a reason why we need a patio.
At very least.
And I don't think that, again, talking apples and oranges, I don't think you can compare them.
At very least, they're having the extra security cameras added.
Yes.
Monitor that area, which is another expense that's not in the.
Yes. Well, apparently, a lot of other establishments that have put patios have probably done a lot more looking into. And they have probably answered most of the questions that we probably have. And they still seem to be doing good and they don't seem to have a problem.
So, um, now you guys have raised somewhere between twenty and twenty-five questions. Do you want me to try to answer any of them?
Answer them all.
Yeah.
Okay, and I don't, I won't be able to now because, I mean. Okay, first of all, the reason this is on the agenda was because I was asked to get more information on the cost of this. You know, it was brought up either A, to get more information, or B, we need to kind of know what total cost, okay? So that's why it was left on the agenda. The second thing is, when you, where you asked about the donation, the city already accepted it. Now, my understanding, and this is all of this, third party, you know, but talking to the Snowdrifters representatives, representative, is that after the council met, they, their original motion for whatever your. is that after the council met, they, their original motion for whatever your, you know, anybody's opinion is on it was that they donate the money if the city would accept it for the patio. And if the city didn't accept it, then they would donate it to the fire department. Now, after this meeting, what happened is, I don't know when or if they had a meeting or exactly what, so you can't hold me to this exactly. But what happened then is at some point, they said, we will let the city discuss it again in July. I mean, we'll keep our offer open in July is what I'm trying to say. And so that's the, not the reason so much is on the agenda because that deals more with the cost of the patio. But what it is, is that's where they're at right now. So they said if the council does decide to accept it for the patio, then, you know, they would agree to pay the thirty-five hundred dollars for the patio. So that's why that's still there. And I think their position is if the city doesn't want to use it for that, then they will donate it to the fire department. So the city did agree to accept it, but I think the thing is, they sort of like, they never said, okay, we're gonna donate it. Here it is. Then what they said is we'll donate it with these conditions. And we, we've all talked about, and, you know, Mayor, you and I talked about this in a lot of detail. There is a lot of, there's several levels to this. But the reality is the city can take the money and can use it for whatever the city deems. But what they want is some affirmative that the city's gonna use it for the patio, okay? So what you have are expen, and I think they're pretty, pretty good estimates for what this is gonna cost. Now, we don't have a camera in there. When you talk about servers, they're gonna go through a door that goes from the, from the muni right out there. Schweitz's, you have to go around like this, so they're, they are two different things. Now, as far as where the money would come from, so you have a, say, let's just say a seven thousand dollar project, maybe seventy-five hundred, and you have a, and I'm not saying that the lit, or the, whether it's good or bad to the patio, but what I'm saying is the reality of it is, is you have a seven thousand dollar project and you have almost half of it covered by a donation.
And I think the project is gonna cost well over that, ten, maybe even twelve thousand. But, okay, so they're not even donating half. They're donating a third.
Well, I don't know how it's gonna get to be that high.
Your speculation.
I mean, but sure, it could go up more.
Yeah.
You know, furniture could be more expensive, but I don't really think it's gonna be five thousand dollar more in expenses. I mean, you've got, you've got estimates for the fence there. You've got estimates for the concrete from a good concrete, you know, contractor that does a lot of work. And you have the estimate for the door from, again, another local contractor that does a lot of work. So I trust their numbers a lot. Now, the fence is Menard's, so again, that's a retail thing. And Milty is, is working on, you know, trying to get, and had probably has lined up volunteer labor to help with some of the things as far as putting the fence up and some of those things. So, yeah, there probably will be more expense, but I don't think it's gonna be ten or twelve thousand dollars. So you've got an opportunity here for something that's gonna cover half of the cost of that. I don't think it's gonna be realistic when we talk about feasibility. I don't know how we can do that. I mean, I understand that, and I'm all for feasibility. You know this. I talk about feasibility all the time for stuff. I don't like to throw money at things we don't know about. But I don't know how you're gonna, you know, short of having a, a retail marketing person come in and we're gonna end up spending more than probably, you know, get out of it. Now, the liquor store has right now in the cash balance seventy-seven thousand dollars. So the rest of this would come out of that. We do have other expenses we need to look at, like siding. We need to do something with that side of the building. But we've got the money now more or less to cover that. Now, I'm not sure, Richard, when you're talking about the loan not being paid back, that loan has been paid back every year. What hasn't happened is the, the, in the budget, we've discussed, should twenty thousand dollars go to the general fund? Now, my recommendation in thirteen was let, keep it in this fund to build it up because frankly, the general fund didn't need the money. Now, that could certainly be donated at any time. You could come back and say, we're gonna donate thirty thousand. I wouldn't recommend that right now. Because I think that, that fund, that cash balance, that earned price fund is at a, a good point where we need, you know, we need a reserve in there to cover things, which we haven't had very well for a long time. The profit loss of that place over seven to ten years isn't much different than it is now. And I'm not saying that twenty-five thousand or twenty thousand is, I'd like to see that go up. You have said this. But it certainly isn't that much worse than it's been in the last decade. In fact, it lost money several times.
Yeah.
So it, it's not, in fact, it's probably doing better than, you know, well, I mean, it's been kind of in the same place for maybe three, four years, maybe three years. And I think that started to creep up.
A million dollars in good investment if it, if it hasn't improved, decreased anything? I, I wouldn't say so.
Well, I can't go back to, I can't comment and go back to when that started. All I comment on is now, if we're gonna operate this place, I mean, I think it's a reasonable thing to look at this. Because if you want to be competitive, and I think that is something that, I think there's a relative chance it may bring in more business. I don't, you know, again, it's all, I mean, if you, the one thing you can look at is a lot of these places, like Fred brought up, now have patios. A lot of liquor establishment have outdoor seating. I mean, and I know it is gonna cut into the open space out there, part of it, but there still will be open space behind it. And there will still be some in front of it. So it's not gonna completely obliterate that whole area, okay? And again, I'm not arguing for or against it. I'm just saying, if you look at where this would cover, it is not gonna cover, I don't see fifty percent of that outdoor.
That's, that's something that I was going to bring up. What you have here for the concrete that calls for twenty-five to thirty-foot area, that would be, I guess, maybe fifteen to twenty percent of the total area.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Where exactly it would be located in that area, I've got no idea.
Well, it has to be determined. But if you take the entrance of the building and then you know, if you look at the site, it kind of goes in, or it juts out, I should say.
Yeah.
It's gonna be back a little ways from where that juts out, probably sort of in the area where the first table is, if you walk in there. Kind of in that general vicinity, that's where the door would, I think, make the most sense. From the standpoint of logistics, from the standpoint of serving that area. And thirdly, just from putting that patio in a place where you're still gonna have some open space in front and you're still gonna have quite a bit in back. You're still gonna have enough room for the Taco Express back there. And when that goes away, you could conceivably put benches or whatever back there still. I mean, you still could, you know, accomplish some of that if, if that was the desire of the council or something we want to look at. You could, you'd suffer from to do that. So again, I'm not trying to say good or bad here. I'm trying to just, was answer some of these questions. And this does not have to be finalized tonight. I think I've said this in every write-up that I've done with this. It doesn't have to be, what I, we're trying to do is get you some numbers so you can see what I think are pretty close cost estimates for what this would be. So I mean, I think you have, you have, you don't have to make the final decision, but I mean, I guess the, basically, the snowdrifters would like an indication, which I think could be done, is does the council want to use this for this? If not, they're gonna donate to the fire department. I think that's what they want to do.
And, and I think the fire department is still going to the city, so when you're talking about money into one project or the other, I, I think it should go to the fire department. Last month, it was, well, they have to make a decision in a hurry, and that was in their note. Well, here, well, we don't have to make it in that big a hurry. We'll let, give you another month. And, oh, I guess we can go another month before you can decide. Here, I, I think we have this.
It makes it cumbersome. It makes it, I mean, it, it really kind of pushes us behind the ball to make a decision. You know, to try to put all this stuff together.
Yeah, I think looking at the patio is, is well worth it. Because perhaps it would pay for itself. That would be nice. But to be rushed into it without, and that is what happened in the past with the liquor stores. Okay, let's do this, okay? And, you know, plans on a napkin and, oh, let's get this guy. And, well, okay, we gotta spend extra because that guy doesn't know anything about restaurants. And so in order to get it to conform, we have to spend extra money.
Good job.
Let's plan at a time.
Because the last time they did a remodeling job, it was very long time ago. The first time you guys did a remodeling job.